I see we're recording him. There you are, okay. I do you are in the crowd. Before we start, I wanted to take a minute to introduce Joe Gill. He is up there on our screen in the upper left-hand corner. He is the townsman engineer. And so I had an opportunity with Eric and Jim to meet with Joe over since the last meeting. And one of the things we were talking about was gravel pit a little bit. I said we could cut them that tonight. And I thought it would be nice for you all to get to see the person who is now our town engineer. So, welcome, Joe.
Thank you.
The first up is the roll call on seating of alternates. And I see we have Anne Pramay, Scott Faison, Steve Nelson, Lee Ann Hutchinson, and myself, all five regular members present. So for tonight, we won't be seating any alternates. Then we'll move on to item number three, additions and changes to the agenda. I've got three small changes under new business by eight. The property known as Seventeenth School Road, not Thirty-Five School Road. And then we'll read letter. The second item A to be item B, and the third one to be item C. Anybody else have any changes to the agenda or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I make the motion to approve the agenda as I just modified. Second, thank you, Steve, for seconding. Any discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote, Anne Pramay? Ian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
No.
No?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking if there was any objection to adding these things.
No, I'm asking for your vote on passing the motion to accept those changes.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion period is five zero zero. At this point in time, I would go on to public comment. And I think, I think all the public coming in is probably going to talk about the school application, the community center application. And so we'll let them come in and we'll take their comments at that point. I don't know you, but do you have any public comment before we start?
I do not.
Okay, this is Jake Surdom, your representative's application, which is on the agenda. Okay? Now, did that application get posted?
Yes.
Okay. And this, we're looking for it, and this, hold on. Welcome, everybody. We are just at that point in the agenda where we are doing public comment. And so at this point, I'd like to limit any public comment because those items are not actually on tonight's agenda. And hearing none, seeing none, out in the Zoom world, is there any public comment on an item not on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, that completes item four. Public comment, we'll move on to item five, new business. And first item up is to accept the application for special permit. Set public hearing on the property known as Seventeenth School Road. The applicant, the town landlord, seeking a special permit in order to construct a community center on properly, property currently identified as Twenty-Five School Road. So, the application was submitted last Friday. So by the rules of our zoning regulations, the application would be dated today, the twenty-second of May. And I did not intend to actually discuss the application tonight. That will all be done at the public hearing. But we will take a look at setting the public hearing tonight. And I wanted to run through the process that I've seen before, before we start talking things for the public here. So, you know, we did have an application submitted by the town for a community center. And with that, our regulations require that we start a public hearing within sixty-five days of the receipt of the application. Couple of things that have to be done before we can do the public hearing. And so that sort of limits on the earlier side when we can do that. The public notice of the hearing must be published twice. The first publication, not less than ten days, but more than fifteen days before the hearing. And the second, not less than two or more than ten days before the hearing. The day published and the day of the hearing are terminus days, and they are not counted in that. So the earliest that we could have a public hearing, if we were to get the notice in the paper of the world, would be twelve days after the law, which is around the fifth or the sixth of June. Couple of other things that have to be done. We have to send the notice of a public hearing to the abutters around the property. And they have to be, that goes after we mail that ten days in advance. And we've got to put signs up notifying the public to drive by the area of public hearing and those need to be up ten days before the global public hearing. So that's, that's the process that we go through. When we start the public hearing, we have to complete it within thirty-five days. And once the public hearing is complete, we must act on the application within sixty-five days after the public hearing is closed. I know the town would like to go a little quicker than that on the application. And we'll try to do that without shortcutting or not doing our diligence on the issues that we need to address. So my first concern was not holding a public hearing until the commission and the zoning agent had a proper opportunity to review the package. Because it did, I think I saw it online on Friday. Some people said they didn't see it until Saturday. I know the, well, so, so the commission members and the zoning agent, I'm not sure if you had, if you had a chance to look through it. I could spend a little time over the weekend looking through that. But I am going to try and share my screen here. You bring up the calendar. Okay. There's the month of June. And so I think that we could probably hold a public hearing anytime after the sixth of June. I was interested in making sure that our land use attorney, attorney grants could be available for that. And I checked his schedule. And I know he's available on either the seventh or the eighth of June. One thing in the process that I forgot to mention is, you know, the commission might want to hold a sidewalk out to look at where the building is and, you know, that sort of thing. Probably the most efficient way to do that would be to do the sidewalk, just as was done by some other folks, have that before we started the public hearing. And so, so that would be my recommendation on how we would do it. At the public hearing meeting, you start out with a sidewalk. It'd be probably about six o'clock. It takes me a little while to get the computer and all that stuff set up. But once we get done with that, and so I'd like to, to get ready for that before we can start the public hearing. It's, we heard from Scott that he's available on the seventh. Any other commission members have any thoughts on that? That date being a good one, being a good one, or is that too soon?
Yeah, like I said, I'm available up until the third.
Yep, so, Anne, take your notes. You might be sitting in, if we go longer than the seventh then. Jim, can you, can you do it? Go ahead, Jim.
I'm not positive this room is available on those dates.
That's why, that's why I wanted to look at the town calendar. And it shows that the only thing on the seventh is the Young at Heart meeting from eleven to three thirty. That was one of the reasons, if you look at Tuesday, you can't read any of that stuff on the calendar up there. But Tuesday's a pretty full night here. And I think by Wednesday, we can have made sure that we have gotten, you know, the abutter letters out, we've got the notices properly posted, and got the signs up and all that kind of stuff for our ten days. So I think the seventh would work good. Are you comfortable being able to do a thorough review of the application between now and then?
Yes.
Any commission members think that they would not be able to support that?
I won't be here, but I'm an alternate, so.
Yep, okay. That's a good excuse.
Hold on, I'll go through that.
Yep. Okay, with that, with that in mind, I would make a motion that we conduct the sidewalk on the seventh of June at six o'clock, followed by a public hearing on the seventh of June here in the community room, hybrid again, at seven o'clock. Looking for a second, sorry. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott? Steve?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes five zero zero. The, I guess, while we're talking about that a little bit, it's, there's a good probability that we wouldn't close the public hearing on the first session of the public hearing. I am not available on the twenty-sixth of June, which is when our next regular meeting is scheduled. But I was hoping to back that up to June twentieth. Again, that date is open on the calendar here. We originally, the nineteenth of June would have been our normal scheduled day. But is that June deep holiday? I decided to put that off, went to the following week, but that had a conflict with my schedule. So now I'm asking the commission to consider moving that date back to the twentieth. And if needed, that would be the second, the continuation of public hearing at that point. Okay, hearing, no discussion on that. I'll make a motion to schedule a special meeting for the twentieth of June to continue the public hearing if needed and hold whatever discussion we need that we would put on the agenda for that meeting. And that meeting would be at seven o'clock hybrid, just like we're doing now. Okay, Scott, seconds? Any discussion on that? Yep, I got it, yep. Okay. Hearing, no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, Anne?
Aye.
Scott? Steve?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes five zero zero. That will have a special meeting, flag, public hearing on the twentieth of June. The other thing that we talked about while we're on the scheduling dates. And we talked earlier about shifting meeting dates to the third Tuesday of the month to facilitate attendance by our town planner. And so that would, and so while the June meeting has to be a special meeting, because we haven't noticed it thirty days in advance, we can shift the dates of the other meetings and have the thirty days notice. And be able to go through the process that we would modify the agenda if we needed to do that, where we can't do that in a special meeting. So with that, you know, the dates fall fairly consistently for the rest of the year here. The August meeting would be twenty-two August, and September would be the nineteenth, October the seventeenth, November the twenty-first, and December nineteenth. The July meeting? Thank you.
I think the eighteenth is the third Tuesday.
Is the eighteenth the third one? Okay, yep, and we'll do that too. And when I started making my notes here, I wasn't sure if we'd be able to get two public hearing meetings in, in June. And so I didn't put, figured we need a little more discussion on that before we went out. But the meeting would be the eighteenth. So I'll make a note that we moved the July through December meetings to the third Tuesday at one, because we missed it. And for a second. Thank you, Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote, Anne?
Aye.
Scott? Steve?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes. I think that is all that I wanted to say about the special permit application for the community center. I did promise that we would open for public comment at this time on that particular application. And happy to hear anything that anybody has at that point, given that we're not going to actually talk about the application until we get the public hearing. Valerie?
Hello? I did send correspondence important when we made meeting letter, we didn't allow more public comment. I had just, I always like that where we are in the process. I know that you have to get a public hearing, thank you. But I have to always confirm that it was my feeling, kind of the neighbor here, right, school, that we didn't do the process again. But we did talk about some of the things that are still on the table and stages. And so, thank you, hopefully we found a way more conversational.
Thank you, thank you for the email. All the commission members who've seen that, I I'm not going to try, this is my first go-through on the hybrid meeting. And I did pretty good getting the calendar up here. I'm not going to try getting your email up there right this minute. But but that will be part of the public record and as we go forward. That, okay. Any other comments on the community center at this point? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to item five B. And certainly, you're welcome to stay, but I think you all have other things to do. And I'll look forward to you being here. And I think it was the seventh of June that we set up for that. The second application and setting of the public hearing. Jacob Surdom, eighty-seven Merritt Valley Road. Applicants seeking a special permit in order to operate a home-based business, Land Street. So as they say, as we said, I did not get a chance to review that application. When did that get posted, Jim?
The time over the weekend.
Okay. Okay. I apologize for not seeing that, and we're not going to discuss the application.
It got posted as an application. It got posted online today.
Oh, I got you, okay.
It was submitted over the weekend, it was posted online today.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So so what is the date of receipt of that particular application?
I don't know whether it came in Friday or Saturday on campus. Today, today I can do the date of receipt, the legal date of receipt would be the next commission meeting.
Okay.
Which is tonight. So that's what I use.
So I guess even if the application came in electronically today, it could be received tonight?
It can, the commission has the expression, as long as it's received within twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Surdom had a conversation with Bart Brants about that today, we got another application.
Okay. Looking at a public hearing for that, since with the commission, consider it an undue hardship? If we started a sidewalk, does the commission want to do a sidewalk over to take a look at that? Or can we drive by? I have driven by, you can see what you need to see pretty easily through the road. So what's the commission think as far as doing a sidewalk on that? Any need for one, or are we all set? We can probably get some photos and post those online with the application too.
Are there any changes being made with this then, or any changes in the property? Or just allowing the space to be used, existing?
As you know, I haven't looked at the application, so I don't know. I think, I think the application is to document and request permission to do what you're currently already doing. There may be some changes that we want to make as a result of that. But but I don't think at this point he would be changing anything until we might require it of him or something like that.
For the record, I did speak to the applicant, and I asked that he provide a narrative with some detail about the business, as well as the checklists, but wasn't good with the checklists, which we simply found with the application. And hopefully we'll have that shorter, and post those online.
So, Jed, do you think it's just a drive-by would be adequate?
I do, you can don't want to talk too much about the application at a time, but you can see what there is to see by the road. My question to you, Jacob, is that I'm thinking that timing is not of the urgent matter for you, because we've been a while waiting to get the application so far. You're just trying to get it resolved.
Correct.
And so my thoughts are that with the public hearing we're going to do on June seventh, that might be a lengthy one. And I would prefer to not have you have to sit through all that. I would like to, at this point, put you off to the twentieth, which might be a shorter one. And we would do the public hearing for you on the twentieth of June, if that being, okay? So with that, I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing on the special permit for the home-based business for Jacob Surdom, eighty-seven Merritt Valley Road, for twenty June. And looking for a second.
That's second.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote, Anne? Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, that motion passes five zero zero. Okay, I think we had the number incorrect to start with. The new item five C, the special, your changes to regular meeting dates is already done. So with that in mind, Jacob, you're all set?
Yes.
You're ready to go, and we'll see you on the plane.
Great, thank you.
Next up, under old business, is the application of William Genovese special permit to operate the ground. And for that, I'll turn that over to Jim.
Okay, this is an ongoing project, as you all well know. Currently, there's two remaining issues primarily. And what is the direction of the flow, the drainage flow? And it's largely contained, I don't know if anyone's interested in that. There is some that's flowing off towards the south, towards the Hudson's property. And like I've spoken to, Joe Biel, that are kind of here, and he had agreed to want to cite it sometime in the near future. And they have better handle on that. And the other issue is the lack of education being established. And I was hoping that that would transpire over the last few weeks, and it hasn't. So that's the other issue. And in part, that's probably a result of the fact that there's a lack of capital, which is called for in the original plan. So again, I'd like to issue that, to address that. And I have had some ongoing dialogue with the applicant and the applicant's engineer. They were invited to come this evening. And the engineer was way on vacation, on the applicant. For jokes not to be heard. But I'm trying, I did get a, sent a letter, which was posted. I got a response, which was posted, and I've not responded to that letter as of yet, or intended. So there's a few issues that are unresolved at this point. We did, the commission did give until the end of May. I also have requested a copy of bond, which I was told is worth it. And that's all I have.
Okay, so you, you said the two issues were drainage and topsoil for vegetative cover?
Yeah, and the, the topsoil and vegetative cover, only one, as one issue. And then the, really, the direction of the drainage is the other. I'd like to address that with all the plans and, 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 uh, building.
Okay, so at this point, you know, the restoration plan required, I think it was four inches of topsoil?
That sounds right.
And, uh, how much is out there now?
Well, there's, I, I don't know exactly how much is in the, in the front portion of the, of the property, but there's next to none in the back, towards the, um, the hill.
Yeah.
Um, it's pretty severe, and that's based on, that's pre-emptive, so that's. Based on blocking on it.
Yeah.
And it was bombs.
So Jed, I tried to go out and check it out during the, the little rainstorm we had Saturday. And, uh, in, the rain was soaking into the ground just by on Saturday, so we didn't get, uh, didn't get to see too much there. We did see the lack of topsoil, and, uh, so what's, what do we see as the way ahead on this?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe Joe, and at that time, respond to Chris Bell's most recent letter. It, it discussed the correction of the flow and the amount of flow, but I'm going back to the the eight fifteen approval, the fifteen twenty-two rule by the commission of restoration. That's what I have to go by right at this point. In, in concert with the original group plan, I mean, still the conditions of the approved, the original approval of this. With that, I think that's the issue, my one, directional limitation.
Okay, now, since the last meeting, I went back to the eight fifteen Zoom recording, and it, uh, it starts maybe an hour or so into the meeting, but I re-listened to everything, and his intention was to have no water. I didn't hear, his intention was to have water go towards a little detention base in the center of the plateau. And any excess would flow up towards the extra water, and then backwards. His most recent letter that he sent, Jim, was that, uh, you know, the runoff is fifteen percent less than on the last plan. In the last plan, I thought it had zero, so I don't know how we got less than fifteen percent. But that's what Jim's gonna go out and, and try to, to figure out there. And Joe, uh, if, if, uh, you know, at some point, you're hard up for something to do, you know, you were to go back to that eight fifteen Zoom meeting, I can send you, uh, I can send you where it actually starts on that, you know, as far as the timing. Uh, but it is over, it, it takes over an hour of your time to listen through, uh, the thing. The, uh, the good news is that, uh, on, on the best plan that he submitted, which he listed in his letter to Jim, is the site restoration, the approved site restoration plan. That was a drawing that I'd never seen before. And so, I, you know, and, and once again, uh, you know, we're having a meeting with no, you know, engineer. So the last time we have talked, uh, to him was on, uh, August fifteenth. Which gets a little frustrating that we've been, you know, coming up on another year, uh, which was a year late on, on when that was supposed to be done. But anyhow, that, uh, that is there, and it would give you a sense of what he committed to doing then. My, my thought was that this other diagram, I would have been happy to, uh, consider it if he'd have come to a meeting and talked to us about it. But to just show up or send it in and say, here's the approved plan, um, I wasn't too keen on that. In, in that plan, it still listed four inches of topsoil everywhere.
Yeah. And that's typically, that's typically a standard, too, for, for vegetative cover.
In the, the newer diagram, it had no topography data on it, so you couldn't tell, um, how big the detention pond was and, and the different sides and all that kind of stuff. The good news was, uh, Catherine Hutchinson had some concerns about some things being removed from the eight fifteen drawing that we talked about, and I think all of, uh, Ms. Hutchinson's concerns were incorporated into that. Uh, it's just been nice that somebody came to the commission and said, here's, here's the updated plan based on the comments I took away from the last meeting. Uh, and we didn't get there, so that's, uh, that, and we did get Nazville, but it doesn't look like either of the two preceding drawings. So there's a fair amount of frustration with the gravel pit. What can you do out there yet? Joe, I'm just trying to give you the background, so that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, I look forward to listening to the, uh, the audio recording of the, of the meeting from, from August. Uh, that'd be, gives a good background, and, and, uh, Jim and I take a sidewalk out there to get a feel for, um, the lay of the land and the drainage patterns and, and the stand of vegetative cover out there, um, to, to just get a handle on it.
Okay, what did you see for topsoil recovery? I saw none that I could say was topsoil. You know, the, the stuff up front looked pretty much like the stuff in the back of me. My thought was that at some point, and this is speculation, at some point during the grading over there, they spread out the topsoil, and then it wasn't graded properly. And so they took everything out of that mound and put it on the topsoil, and so they lost them, because they didn't follow the plan. That.
Vegetative cover, how many, seven, there?
Um, I would say maybe five percent.
Sorry.
Do we still have that bond?
Yes.
This is up to date?
I'm told it, I, I don't have it.
Hold on to that.
I like it as well. You can go get your bond yourself. That was nice.
Yeah. So that, uh, that's where we are on gravel pit. Any other questions from the commission for Jim on the gravel pit at this point? This is the point under the runoff. In, in the letter, he said, the total runoff area for the gravel pit going towards the south, approximately fifteen percent less than the drainage area on the approved site plan. So is he talking about the central basin? I don't know what he was talking about, and that's one of the problems, you know.
I think that's what he's referring to.
Yeah, and, and Jim was trying to get in here so he could explain that to us, because neither Jim or I could figure out exactly what he was talking about there, and it were not, so. All right. What meeting should we next discuss this at? I'm reluctant to do that at the seventh June meeting. I'm thinking that might need to be at the twenty, June meeting as well.
Twenty, that's good, yeah.
Okay.
Probably.
And.
I've been, uh, trying to reset it, and I hear of that.
Can I know Mark Branch is available for the twentieth of June, uh, if we want to have him here to weigh in on that at all? But, uh, I was trying to figure out, you know, at this point, it's really an unfortunate item for Jim to go off and do. And I asked him, what, what actually does the commission have? And, uh, we can free up the bond. They're not, and so that, that gives us some leverage there. Joe, did you have any, Joe, me, yeah?
Did you repeat? Sorry, what?
Go, go ahead, Anne.
Could you, Jed, could you repeat what you said, um, about two minutes ago or so about the topsoil? You said something about it may not have been spread properly in the first place, and then something about the grading, and then it looked to you like something else had been done after that. Could you repeat that part?
Yeah, so, uh, is, uh, you probably remember, there was, uh, somewhere in time where somebody started grading, and they weren't really doing it, uh, much in compliance with, uh, with the plan. Um, and it wasn't very hot. Somebody, we, we recognized that there were grading sticks out there around the lot, and they had blue lines probably two feet above where the, uh, the soil level was. And if that was where the lot needed, maybe it's what, what, but, uh, if that's where it needed to be graded to, they had to move a lot of material down onto that plateau. I think that whoever was doing the initial grading spread the topsoil out at that point in time, thinking they were done. And it turned out that they had to take all that material they excavated from the hill and spread it around to get the elevations correct. And so my thought was, they probably, they might have spread the topsoil out earlier, and then covered it up with another foot or two of the material they pulled out of the hill to get the, uh, the site up to the proper elevations that it needs to be to stay out of the floodway.
In order to do what?
To get the elevation high enough so that it was properly out of the floodway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Joe, did you have any questions or comments at that point?
Uh, no, of what you described seems quite plausible that they maybe have lost some of the topsoil through the process of regrading and re-establishing grades, proper grades. Uh, but again, I'll, you know, go outside, walk the site, and, and get a good feel for where everything's at, at that point.
Okay, yeah, and I'm sure Jim would be happy to go out there, uh, with you to, to walk around, uh. Ms. Catherine Hutchinson, I see, uh, that you are with us tonight. Did you have any comments at that point on, uh, anything we've, uh, been talking about?
No, um, these are points that I was raising, uh, in the limited time that I had to look at the material that was posted this morning. And I think it's a very good idea that, um, Mr. Dylan and Jim walked the site. And so Mr. Dylan can see things firsthand, and also would give him an opportunity to review everything, um, that all of us have been dealing with over the last several months, if not years. So I think it's a very good idea.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And I would like to, um, you know, thank you for inviting me to comment, because, um, as you know, I'm very interested in the situation.
Understand, yeah, and thank you for participating.
You're welcome.
So that, uh, that completes, uh, item six, Old Business six A. Next, uh, um, because we're moving right along, the amendment to the town's zoning regulation. So, uh, again, just, uh, I have gone from, I've got everything on my desktop. I've got the town issued laptop now, so that I can to come here and, uh, display stuff and, and that sort of thing, um. But I'm not as well populated on this computer yet with, with that. But since the last meeting, uh, and I think I sent out everybody that, uh, I communicated with Attorney Branch on both the issue of, uh, requiring one of the, the, one of the, uh, property owners to, uh, be either in the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit. He said that's probably not clear cut, but, uh, he thought that was a good idea. Um, the other one that I asked him about was, uh, now that we weren't gonna do a special permit, um, should we, can we still put, you know, consistent with the rural character of the town in there? And he said, well, you, you know, if, if you were to get taken to court, you'd probably lose that one, but I would put it in anyhow, just to, you know, to try and, try and, uh, influence that to begin to, to be consistent. You know, one of the discussions I had with Eric over the last month was, uh, he, he asked me if I was still planning to get rid of the special permit thing. And, uh, that, uh, again, I did that because it was consistent with the state. He said, I would be, I would be concerned about giving up that, uh, ability to control what the accessory dwelling unit looked like. And I thought that was a good point. Um, you know, he always has good points. But then I said, what, what say do we have when a guy's going on to build a house? To make it consistent with the rest of the town? And if we had no say on a house, I didn't think we were given up too much by the accessory apartment. So I said, I'm willing to take that chance, and if somebody puts, uh, you know, something totally ridiculous in this accessory dwelling unit, uh, I don't think they will, because they don't want to lose their property values, but, uh, anything could happen, and we could always change the rules back, but, uh, I think most people, you know, they want to add something that looks nice. That's been our experience so far. We haven't had to weigh in on any of that, uh, at this point, so I was okay with that. Um, the other thing that, uh, that Attorney Branch recommended, and I, you know, pushed back a little bit, because it was pretty well spelled out in the public act that we couldn't do this, um, was he said, his recommendation, they're recommending all the towns require that the accessory apartments be deemed affordable. And his logic is that, uh, any rent with an accessory apartment is gonna be very low in comparison to what a house rent would be. So it's not gonna come close to that threshold for being, uh, in excess of that, not, not real hardship on, on anybody there. And oh, by the way, we're not setting the world on fire on getting our goal of ten affordable housing units that are coming into being so far, so. I, he said, okay, um, he, he offered to provide us a template, because there's some, some work that goes along with that, uh, and, and I don't know what all of it is, but they'll give us a template to, to, to support that, and, uh, and that's what I'm looking for, some feedback from you folks. And Anne, you look like you had a question or comment?
I have a question. Seeing online and different things about different parts of the country, people are doing these tiny houses, and they're on wheels oftentimes. It's like a, a movable base that they built a tiny house on. Would those be allowed or not in our?
So, on that, and I'm not, I'm not an expert on that yet, some of that's ground we have to go plow, but we did not opt out of, uh, a thing that the state issued for caregivers. And you can bring in essentially a little mini trailer for, you know, caregiver. That could be a family member, that could be, uh, you know, a professional uh, doing that kind of stuff, and then when there's no longer the need for the caregiver, the, uh, the little trailer goes away. We chose not to opt out of that a couple of years ago, so I'm thinking that that would be okay.
Or in the time. See, yeah, a period of time.
Period of time, yes. We, we've also, we haven't, uh, spent any time yet discussing the states. We're not allowed to prohibit manufactured homes, which I think are big trailers. And, and we haven't started to talk about that yet, and, and like saving that for our new town plan to help, help that. So there's work, work to come on that, but I don't think, what do you think about, uh, allowing somebody to live in a little trailer? You know, Jim is, uh, you know, he's going nuts trying to get people out of the trailers.
Yeah, no, I was thinking about that, because I know that just the common travel trailer that you would bring with you camping, say, is not allowed to be used for, for outside of the thing. Is that right? You've been chasing people out on that. But these tiny homes tend to be settled into one spot, and then not moved around, and not taken camping, but people that live in this little tiny house. And it seems to me they're about the size comparable to what we have for our. And it seems to me they're about the size comparable to what we have for our accessory apartments, like the one where it's the little garage that's being made into a
Yep.
accessory apartment.
CBS Sunday Morning Show yesterday, I don't know if they've watched that, but they, they were talking about design stuff and they, they started out with the highest penthouse in the world in New York City, you know, thirty thousand square foot penthouse up there, just huge. And then they were, they went down and they showed a couple of tiny houses, tiny apartments. And they were talking on the order of seventy-five square feet. As we saw with the, uh, accessory apartment we approved at the last meeting, that was, I think, uh, maybe two hundred or so. Uh, and to me, that looks small, but they had, you know, the bed raised up into the ceiling and all this stuff, but you know, it was, uh, pretty impressive, but the way to the future is tiny houses.
It's less than four of these tables.
Yep, um, and, and so I'm not opposed to those. It's a question of coming through with the septic system work and all that kind of stuff. And obviously nobody, you know, you can put a bunch of those in, in an area, which our zoning regulations currently don't allow. And so, uh, but as we get into the affordable housing, I think there's a growing market for tiny homes and, uh, that everybody wants one, but there's, are that people that do that, uh, that might be something we need to look into. So we'll, we'll come there. Um, and I sent out a, uh, a list of comments from Jim. Might be able to so I probably can't make that. You probably already and, uh, and I'll, I'll put out the highlight here. Jim provided a couple of comments. Minimum of ninety day agreement for units. I thought that was, um, okay. Actually, everything that Jim suggested there, I thought was a good idea. Uh, I wasn't too keen on the allowing basement apartments to exceed the established percentage. Uh, just because trying, it's already too hard to make a rule, you know, on, on the size of the, uh, accessory apartment. And, uh, I figured trying to do something different in the basement, just stick with whatever the rules are for accessory apartments and go with that. But, uh, if we didn't have any don't know how to make this thing zoom on my little touchpad here. It didn't look up the bounds, so I'm not going to try to, uh, get that to go, but, uh, anyhow, um, unless somebody's got thoughts differently, you know, I'll incorporate these comments into the draft, uh, stuff we had. With putting in the, uh, the stuff about the affordable units. And we'll go back where everybody see at some point after we make it through the community center discussion. But I didn't want to go too long, uh, you know, uh, that was good input. Um, I want to have that ready to go. Uh, but this is, uh, we'll do that as time allows. Not that that'd be a big deal for us. So I apologize for the, uh, inability to read there. I didn't practice how to make the font bigger before we got started tonight. Try that again. When I have, using your time to do that.
Question on the ninety days. Around the lake, there are some people that rent out their homes for RVs and things like that.
Yep.
And then there's some people that have, but apartments above garages. But we're saying that if, if that apartment above a garage is accessory dwelling within, they can rent out for a week or two at a time. But if you put your house in there, you can. I think that's kind of
So I am not aware of houses, or I am aware that there's some housing being rented. We had talked about this some time ago and it wasn't a concern for the commission at that point in time. Um, but is that it's if it's a conservative commission, you know, we can, we can do that. Other towns have taken some action like this. My, my thought was I wasn't going to do it until it showed itself to be a problem like this. But I think, uh, it worked okay.
Yeah.
Um, but I didn't I do think that, uh, with the accessory apartments, it was okay restriction to consider putting in there. Jim's kind of was, might not even be legal, but I figured if that's what Mark Brants is for, they'll, they'll let us, uh, know if we're running foul. Uh, so far, his guidance is good. It might be running foul, but do it anyhow. And, uh,
Yeah, I'm not saying it's been a problem up to this point. I just want to make sure we're consistent.
Yep. Okay, good point. We'll look for that, uh, I forgot that there are some places in our RV and B around. Yes.
There are people
There's at least one.
There's more than one.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah, and, uh, again, not a problem, but
Yeah, I, I don't have any complaints. I just, if we're going to restrict
Yeah, no, that's one of the, we are being so it's good point. Thank you. Um, any other comments on the, uh, accessory apartment? Okay, the, the third item is the updated status of contract for the town's plan of conservation development, planning services. Uh, the budget passed, so, uh, I think the next step there is, uh, we'll get with Eric and we'll get, uh, a meeting with, uh, John uh, from Taiki and, uh, have him show up at a meeting to, uh, to meet us all and, uh, figure out how we get started on the plan of conservation. One of the things that, that I do think is important, you know, the original intent was to uh, focus very heavily on the plan of conservation development. That's why we got that guy. But as I look ahead to budget season next year, it would be nice to be able to say that this guy is a success story and we got nothing to show for it yet. So maybe we could have him get some grants and that kind of thing, get more than paper salary. And, uh, that way everybody would think, okay, that's, that's not bad. And, uh, make that, so so we need to figure out what, what it is that, uh, looks like a success story and then ride towards that and, uh, make it something. And so, you know, and kind of shoot the reason with Eric on that a little bit so that, uh, we can do that. But we should be seeing him, there's I guess, uh, third thing, before I forget it, uh, you know, the other guy that, uh, I met and talked to with, uh, Jim over the last month since last meeting was our new building official. And, uh, very nice guy, likes, you know, coordinating with Jim, which is, uh, you know, improvement over what had been happening in the past. Not that it was, uh, the other guy's fault that he wasn't getting together with Jim. He was just overloaded with way too much going on and, uh, that sort of thing. But, uh, you know, we talked about the accessory apartment, um, building codes. And one of Jim's comments is put something in here. They asked me to come, but, uh, who's the name, Rich?
Rich.
Rich, okay. Okay, he, you know, he had he was taking seriously making sure that, uh, accessory apartments are properly built. We, we talked about, uh, um, putting it on a pad of stones and, and all those kinds of things. Yeah, there's, there's rules out there for that stuff and, uh, but he's going to be engaged, uh, making sure that, uh, whatever accessory apartment is built to code. And I thought that was, uh, pretty good outcome for, for us on that.
He's dedicated, he's just, he's dedicated to
See ya.
Is he just for handover?
He is, uh, all, or any other, okay. I don't know if there's any more than that that he's doing or not, but, uh, but he's, you know, he's actually looking to set up routine office out here at the town hall, which I thought was, you know, something that we, uh, we hadn't had, um, I thought that was best. You know, there's a time where people can come in and meet the guy and talk to him, ask questions and laugh. Maybe that takes a little load off of Jim, too.
Didn't come in today. I believe he's going to come in Monday morning, but nine o'clock in the morning. Foundations until six hundred. That was kind of intriguing.
Yeah, I do remember he said, yeah, and, uh, got to know someone, never really know what all that means yet, but, uh, I do, uh, know that, uh, he knew to go and he knew the answers. And he was ready to go out and make it something. So I thought that was, uh, you know, it improved, uh, so like Jim's starting to look up, you know, looking pretty good. He's got all the handles out here now. But that's it on the service contract. Most of any questions on the new, uh, town plan or we'll stand for that. Next item up is the approval of the minutes. And, uh, it's broken into two parts, the, the public hearing first. Then I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing meeting minutes. From Monday, April seventeenth, thirty-four minutes. Okay, and for May seconds, any discussion on the public hearing minutes? Hearing, hearing done. A call for a vote to approve, and Sky?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Both minutes are approved by zero to zero. Now we'll move on. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from the same date. Thank you, Steve. Little bit more to review there. But I had no comments on. Okay, hearing, no discussion. A call for a vote on those, Ian? Sky? Steve? Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero. And I told Marina that, uh, I thought she did an exceptionally fine job on that, wrapped in the minutes there, so hey, we'll keep you around for a while. Next item up is correspondence. Jim, do you have anything there?
No.
Done. Okay, administrative reports, Jim?
Okay, so my point enforcement action, I have Steve Barnett at six six four Route Six. Housing code light and zoning, uh, more specifically, uh, a lot of junk on the property, the Moncrant, it is, um, he has been noticed, cease and desist has been issued, um, by the county attorney, three twenty-one, we have one here. I will be following up with Mark Brants on that. The housing code enforcement simply that the the house, that the house not be occupied and it is not, the primary dwelling on the property is not occupied. I do have an ongoing issue with folks living in the, in the mobile home behind, or not the mobile home, I'm sorry, the TRB. And that's, uh, hasn't, hasn't been resolved as yet. And I'm working with, um, both Dennis O'Brien and Mark on that. Mark Brants, um, haven't seen any progress on that as of yet.
So cease and desist was sent when?
Okay, the storage, uh, storage sent four five four five twenty-two addition, um, cease and desist was sent eleven fourteen. How long later sent three eight? So I got um, three forty-nine one six, the, the jungle, the fence next to the library. Uh, I've been working with him to try and resolve that. I I got an email from him on, um, four three indicating that he had painted some of the bygone and started putting it up. I don't believe he has as of yet. I think, I don't know that for a fact. I'm sorry, uh, two forty-three Long Hill, abandoned house. I have yet to issue a letter on that. That is, um, it's set way back. It, it's open. That's something on the market. I thought it was going to take care of itself. It hasn't. I will have to get a letter out on that. Um, eighty-seven Merritt Valley, I have heard in business from residents the commission received that, an application for, for Atlantis. Oh, not patient, ceasing, so that is in progress. Sixty-four Long Hill Road, uh, that's the property on the intersection really of, uh, Long Hill and Wheeling. And that's it's not, it's still open, but it's largely been resolved. If anybody could find, um, the letter is going out actually from the town attorney's office. Just that, um, there's, there's still an, there's opening, the garage door, it's intact.
Are you talking about Long Hill and Bear Swamp?
Yeah.
Intersection?
Yeah. Or that's it.
Yeah.
Sorry. Long Hill and Bear Swamp.
Yeah.
The old green house, it's still there. Um, forty-three Times Market, had numerous conversations with Phil Meyer, the owner, but an RV there, as he indicated that it would be resolved. So, uh, I have had numerous telephone conversations with him and I hope that it's taken care of in the next few weeks. That's pretty much it. I have, other than that, I have, um, illegals. But the driveway that went into Juribah Road, which I follow up on, uh, swing in like last week, sorry, I was struck my attention in last week.
A new driveway?
Well, it the drive, there's an old, there's a lot that had been improved years ago, um, somewhere in Juribah, thirty-nine is significantly straightened, although I have not, we don't have service. It's been a lot, uh, in every model. Somebody chose to put a driveway on that for it. I don't know whether that's just what was approved or not. I don't get that as yet.
Do our public works, they have it written all for her?
Yes, he actually, Jay actually brought my attention. Yeah, he, we, and we, we work, we've been building up to work with public works. Both, he signed up on the paper and signed up on the location and that was just a thought, if, if we but I mean, I go back to the, in this case, I go back to the original, the, the subject plan. And hopefully there's, there's a driveway in there.
Okay, so they did without a permit, but regular one, right?
He did, yeah. Which, he maybe, he actually put a, an anti-cracking ban in. He's like supposed to, just, I don't know whether it's in the correct location or not. I don't even know if the location, it's a surrounding building that I can't sort of move the driveway on, that's something to be in place.
Is it a stoppage?
Was it also? But I don't, during the proof is it goes back to the sevenish.
And maybe they add it for one more time.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. In Little Wetlands and Watercourse lays on, uh, once again, we had no meeting, so, uh, that continues to be pretty easy. Uh, next up on Next up on the agenda is a public comment. Anybody there that has any public comments for us at this point in time? Joe, any comments for us at this point in time?
I'm, I'm set. Thank you. I think we lost the audio from you guys.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Leanne, can you hear us through here? This side?
I can hear you now. I also lost it for a couple of minutes.
Okay, did you have a comment?
Uh, no, that, just that, just that. I don't know if you could hear me, but I couldn't hear you.
Yep, got it. So any other miscellaneous discussion? Hearing done, make a vote in to adjourn. Hold that.
I have paper, paper plans for the community center for everyone over on this table over there. And I actually have paper applications. I don't know whether anybody needs a paper application because they can read, those are readily, read those online. The plans are not as easily to read on the air.
Those will be easier to look at than what's on the computer. I moved in here at age seventeen. All of David, raise your hand. Leanne, I think your hand must have been raised back there. Consider it as we. So vote for that, five, zero, zero. Thank you, Leanne. Good night, everybody.
Right.